Good morning. So as we get ready to start the Board of Supervisors meeting, if everybody could please check their phones, make sure they're on off or on silent. Thank you. Okay. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mo, would you please lead us with the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. I'll call for the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as posted and deliver and allow chair to deviate as necessary.
Second. I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Call to the public. And we'll start with William Shook. William?
Yes, thank you. Here we go. This is, I'm trying to figure this out. Okay. All I wanted to say today was that in section, on this pad.
Mr. Shook, I just want to remind you you have three minutes, okay?
Yes. Section 1208, Procedures for Review and Approval. A is conceptual plan. Two is submittal requirements. And B of the submittal requirements is the plan narrative in the following format. Eight of that is public participation plan, maximum of two paragraphs describing a public participation plan for the project. The plan shall include steps to involve the general public, community and civic groups, homeowners associations, agencies, organizations, and government entities. In the Los Milles Plan, they included on item I, Public Participation Plan, the owners of LNV know their neighbors and other winery owners in the region and will contact them to discuss the pad proposal, process, and timing. An invitation to a virtual meeting will also be sent to the most impacted property owners located within 600 feet. A letter will briefly describe the project and offer a date and time to meet, as well as a way to contact the project team with any questions. I don't, I don't see that their public participation plan included any steps to involve the general public. They were just talking about winery owners, community and civic groups. I don't see any civic groups included, homeowners associations, agencies, organizations, or government entities. The only thing in the entire proposal was that they consulted with the Sonora Elgin Fire Department on fire issues, but the fire department was not aware of its role in involving the general public. Under this, one of the government entities in our area is the Santa Cruz Natural Resource Conservation District, which is state-sponsored, was not informed, nor was the Santa Cruz County Fair and Rodeo Association, nor the Elgin Club, nor any of the churches. And even in the, in the minutes of the, of the second commissioners' meeting, they mentioned that there was no newspaper that they could announce this in, and they left out the Patagonia Regional Times completely, which has published at least three editions, they're a monthly paper, published at least three editions during this period of time, and there was never any indication of, you know, of this Los Milles proposal. So they have completely violated.
Mr. Shook, you need to wrap up your comments, please.
This requirement. Okay. That's all I had to say. By the way, I can't see you guys either.
Thank you very much.
I'm from Santa Cruz County, but I don't see you. Are you supposed to be on?
Yep, we can see you, sir.
We can see you.
Yeah, I could see, I can see me too, but I can't see you. Anyway, thank you very much for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you next time.
If there's anybody out there in, in the virtual world, if you hit star nine on your phone to raise your hand, or if you are on a computer, please raise your hand so we can call on you. The next person we're going to call on is Ray Sayer and Jesse Zamorano. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Ray Sayer, I live at 37 Santa Gertrudas Lane, also Casa Paloma Bed and Breakfast. Jesse Zamorano was supposed to be here today. She's down, well, under the weather, so I'll just report for her. But I just want to bring to your awareness that there's a newly formed LLC nonprofit within Santa Cruz County which Jesse is heading up, and it's Santa Cruz County, Arizona Shining is, is that LLC. And you'll be hearing more about them is, is in the months ahead. Their goal is to reduce trash throughout the entire Santa Cruz County area. So they came my direction. As you know, in 2018, we organized a cleanup on the river, and I helped with Supervisor Bracker on Ruby and some other places. So the short-term goal is on Labor Day, we want, we've identified with Friends of the Santa Cruz River, another bottled dam float trash area. So probably Labor Day, we want to do another giant cleanup, and I've already met with Jesus Feldaz, and the county will be helping as to what degree that they can. There's also kind of a short-term goal. We're working with Park Service and the Onson Trail as well to put informational kiosks, pick sticks, garbage bags, that sort of stuff along the trail, so as people walk, they can just, you know, pick up a garbage bag, pick step, do their thing, and then deposit it back. This will all be grant-funded. So that's the mission. There'll be some community outreach in terms of, you know, reducing the trash load and, you know, if we don't have a problem in the first place, we wouldn't have to deal with it. So anyway, Santa Cruz County, Arizona Shining, you'll hear more about them in the future. That's all I have.
Do you have a contact?
Jesse Zamorano, and I'll give that to the, I'll give that to Liz, if you would, so.
Great. Thanks, Ray. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment and call to the public?
Yes. This is Bruno Hazen. I'd like to speak in front of the chairman.
Can you speak up, please?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear.
Okay. Go ahead and.
All right. My name, my name is Bruno Hazen. I'm a Sonora resident with a seven acre land. Need to address the fact on section 1005, that does allow, which is not stated, manufactured or pre-engineered roofs. I thought pre-engineered walls, which is better windshield, better R value, and engineered in a controlled environment. Why is now allowed, and the building departments just have a blinder on that, they can't even consider that, it is allowed in a commercial environment, but not residential environment, where it's a better product. It is not a manufactured homes, but it does allow, the county does allow manufactured home in a certain setting. This will be a better setting for the fact it's pre-engineered walls. It's the same as pre-engineered roofs. I'd like to consider the fact that somebody has addressed the zoning code and listed in there that engineered walls are not allowed. There's no such a statement. It's just a broad statement according to the building department. I'd like to have some kind of respond back from the Board of Supervisor and the chairman, please. I could provide my phone number if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to comment, call to the public? Raise your hand on a computer or star nine on your phone. Okay. And we will then call to the public, and we will go to current events. Supervisor Malera.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning, sir.
I just have one item to report, and basically yesterday was D-Day, and I want to thank all the World War II veterans, along with all the veterans, for their service. And that's all I have to report, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, to grateful, the nation is grateful for all of our soldiers, men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifices. We had Memorial Day recently, and to those men and women that continue to defend this great country. I had the opportunity to attend a meeting through the Santa Cruz Chamber Government Affairs Meeting in Mexico with the governor of the state of Sonora. The state of Sonora and the federal government through their president are going to begin to update a lot of the port of entries along the Arizona-Sonora Mexican border. They have some great plans. They've already started on, on some of them downtown. One of the interesting things is that they have money set aside to move the train tracks all the way to the east. Fortunately, I guess on this side, Union Pacific will say, we'll move, but who's going to pay for it? And so that's probably, may not happen, but I'm glad that they're putting the infrastructure, the money into updating them so that they can make it a lot easier for cross-border traffic. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're acknowledging the veterans and the soldiers from D-Day. If we look in our own families' histories, we don't have to go back very far to find our uncles and our grandparents that, you know, that fought in that war and served. But in this day and age of everybody now and what's going on forward, we, a lot of people don't take time to reflect on what's happened in the past. I was able to attend the Memorial Day service at the Nogales Cemetery. It was a good service. I'd like to thank the VFW for putting that on every year. I also had to, an opportunity to attend a Port Authority meeting this month. I had the opportunity to speak to the Santa Cruz County Board of Realtors, gave them a county update, and they let me know that they were going to do a candidate forum on the 29th of this month in Nogales. And then I also had a chance to participate, attend the Santa Cruz County Democratic Forum that was in Las Laguna. It was this Saturday. And there was also a really well event, really well-attended event, and, and the candidates came from across the state to participate in that. So I'd like to thank them for giving us an opportunity to speak to the different candidates that are running in District 21 and also statewide. And that's what I have to report. Mr. Manager, Assistant Manager.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, nothing to report. Thank you.
After I went through all that fumbling? Thank you. Item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash Investments, Expenditures, and Revenues. Maricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $17,908,000 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The road fund has an overall balance of $1,266,922 with an investment amount of $815,000. The flood control district has an overall balance of $1,411,842 with an investment amount of $513,000. The jail district has an overall balance of $3,707,765 with an investment of just a little bit over $1 million. Keep in mind that we're going to be making the interest and principal payment of $2.3 million, hopefully a little later when you approve it. Total for all funds, overall balance $41,942,700 with an investment amount of $14,443,000 for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $13,299,246.
Okay. Are there any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Maricio, thank you very much.
Sure.
And we will move on to item F.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and move that we recess a regular session and convene it to the flood control district.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Angie, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, board members and everyone. Well, as you have all noticed, no rain so far. As far as Effron Canyon goes, we were awarded, of course, May the 10th, and we had our kickoff meeting already, and thank you, board and county attorneys, you approved all contracts, so they are up. They just haven't returned back their signed copy, so we're just waiting on that. Keynote prints became effective on May 21st, as we all, as I had noted before, John already uploaded it into the system, so it's already in the system and active, so anyone can look on our system and view it. And then you asked me how many homes, and there were 18, and there's about four that are questionable because of the way the ink looks. So we, with a better look, we'll be able to make a better determination on that, but it, it could be as many as 22 or more.
Okay.
Okay. And Stan Tech, that was done by J.E. Fuller. Stan Tech Consulting for us did the Gilberto Project will be, which will become effective hopefully this month on the 21st of June. And as soon as that becomes effective, they send us actually an email where we can download the maps, and that will be uploaded as soon as possible. The next one that will be coming up will be, be the private property on South Industrial Park, and that's 34 acres that will become flood zone free by September 6th, hopefully. And then we go to the SOQ. Our SOQ, they finally had a meeting, they do have a winner, they are negotiating, so the contracts will hopefully be up sometime this June, and next month I'll be able to tell you who it is. So, so far. Nogales Wash, the downtown, where they're working on getting the, re-establishing new zones, that, all our paperwork is in, we're just waiting to be notified from FEMA, and we haven't heard anything yet. As of Potero Creek, we're also just in the holding pattern, just waiting to hear back from them. And lastly, we had 208, 203 flood hazard information sheets. 19 were from the city of Nogales, 174 were from county, and 10 were from the town of Patagonia. There were a total of only one site review. We had no drainage complaints that we had to follow up, and there were 13 flood permits that were issued. Five were in the city, and seven were in the county, and we didn't have any information that came directly from the city or the town of Patagonia so far. Any questions?
Okay. So no reports from Patagonia, no reports from the city?
No, unfortunately.
Okay. And I will open this up to public comment for flood control. Anybody online or members of the audience that'd like to comment? Okay. Seeing nobody rushing up to the podium.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to adjourn flood control and move into our general session.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. And now that we are in our general session, I will ask for us to move into item H for public hearing, to request to adopt the ordinance number 2022-02, final plan for Los Milles Vineyards planned area development for parcel number 109-47-041M, case number PAD-22-01.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are in our public hearing. So, Frank?
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Members of the board. Hope you guys are doing well today. So this is the Los Milles final plan hearing. Essentially, your previous meeting, you guys heard the hearing related to this project, the planned area development related to Guest Ranch with nine casitas on site. And essentially, between the last meeting and this meeting was the time as free for any, if supervisors had any concerns or questions to ask the applicants prior to taking action on the final plan. And the applicants at this point have revised their, or refined their intermediate plan into what we call the final plan, and that's what you're being presented with today to ultimately take action on. If you have any questions for me or the applicant, I'm here.
None from my side, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Malera.
I just personally, personally want to commend the project. I think it's great economic development. It's a great concept, and I want to wish them all the luck in the world.
Okay. And I have no speaker slips specifically for this public hearings, but I will ask if there's any members of the audience that would like to address the board in this hearing? And is there any member of the, any man, any member out in Zoom land or on the phone that would also like to do that? If you're on the phone, it's star nine. And if you're on the Zoom meeting, if you raise your hand, we can call on you. Do we have anybody raising their hand?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. And nobody's rushing up to make a comment on this? Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adjourn our public hearing and reconvene regular session.
Second.
And I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we will go to item 16, discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 2022-02, final plan for Los Milles Vineyard planned area development for parcel number 109-47-041M, case number PAD-22-01.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? I'd like to thank the owners of Los Milles and for their vision and for working through this whole process. It's been a long haul for them, but we greatly appreciate it when people in the community use the tools that are available to them to do this type of work. So that is my comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
We will.
Okay. So we're going to go back to the beginning of the, scratch that off so I don't do another public hearing.
Yeah. Action items.
We're going to go to the action items, top of the list. Discussion, possible action on the rotation of chairman and vice chairmanship.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. I know that last time we were with the rotation, you wanted to be the third part of that, and I was still wondering if you would still like to do that, or do you still want to stay as the chairman?
I'm happy being the chairman right now.
Okay. Well, then, I would like to change the vice chairman from now until August 31st of 2023, and then the chairmanship and the vice chairmanship beginning September 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2024. I would like to nominate Bruce to be the vice chairman from September 1st to December 31st, 2024, myself as the chairman from September 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2024, and be the vice chairman under your leadership effective 6/8 till we change in 2023. And that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I will second that motion.
Under discussion.
And I will call for discussion. Supervisor Malera.
I, I believe this board has made it unequal 16 months per person, and we rotate it. Now, if you guys decide to go differently, then that's, and, and I know what's going on with Supervisor Reese, and unfortunately, you know, the election at CSA obviously didn't go down with him very well. Our colleagues voted, and I prevailed, and, and I specifically mentioned it to you, that I called you, I gave you a courtesy call. We all have the right to run for that position. And it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate we're going in this route, but, you know, we're, we're big boys, we're professional, and it's, if that's the route you guys want to take, that's the route you guys want to take. But a wise man once told me, be careful with the person that has an "i" between the "s", and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Just to say, it's nothing personal.
We have a motion and a second. No more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Motion carries, 2-1. Item 2, discussion, possible action for authorization to create and fill for chemical disease investigator positions in environmental health to fulfill multiple previously approved COVID-19 grant work plans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These are just some positions that we want to fill to continue the COVID response that we have continued on since the beginning of the pandemic, and this will fulfill a lot of those work plans that we had previously put in.
Okay.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second?
Go ahead.
I will second. Discussion, Jeff, so you've started reporting again COVID cases to us?
Yes. Yes. We, we were going to go to a weekly report, and then it kind of started to get in a little bit of a spike. We're starting to see a little bit more testing picking up again, so these are going to help us investigate even further into the contact tracing portion of it.
Okay. And have you seen any severe illnesses coming from this?
No. Unfortunately, right now, it hasn't been any severe ones as far as hospitalizations or deaths, it's just been positive cases.
Okay. Thank you very much for that information. Okay. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item 3, discussion, possible action to approve the Secure Rural Schools and Communities Act, forest fees awarded distribution for school year 2022, 23, excuse me, 22, 23.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I hear a second? And I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 3-0. Item 4, discussion, possible action to approve the 911 Grant Agreement, number ADOA-AZ911-23-09 with the Arizona Department of Administration for fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $519,268.
Move to approve.
And I will second. Is there anybody from the Sheriff's Department? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 5, discussion, possible action to approve memorandum of understanding with the Red Cross to assist individuals, families, and communities who have been or can be affected by disaster or an emergency services, or emergency.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second? And I will second.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, this is a memorandum standing for the Red Cross to come in and set up like shelters or help assist when emergencies, like say wildfires, which we've already used them a couple of times with the Sonora fires that we've had, they've come in and set up shelters to be available for those that were displaced during that time.
Okay. Thank you very much for your work on organizing that. It's very needed. They actually had to set up twice with our two big fires that we had in the East County, so we thank them for their services to our community. And no more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 3-0. Item 6, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement contract number CTR060047 with Arizona Department Health Services for immunization services from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027, the amount of $50,000. Jeff, you're going to have to sit a little bit closer to that mic.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
He's working to get his steps. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
And I have a second, and I will second. Under discussion, Jeff?
Yeah, this is just our immunization contract with the state to provide the VFC program, a vaccine for children. It's a five-year contract that we renew. It was due to expire at the end of the year, but they've moved it to the fiscal year, so they ended, they're ending it June 30th, so we're going to start this one on June, July 1st.
Okay. And this is the contract that we work with Mariposa Community Health Center?
Correct.
And these are just the regular immunizations? And these are just the regular immunizations?
Immunizations, correct. The ones for the children.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 3-0. Item 7, discussion, possible action to approve the Renewal of SOA Carrier Services Agreement, number AZIA00078 with SentryLink for broadband services for the annual amount of $12,000. That's from the IT Department.
Move to approve.
And I will second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 3-0. Item 8, discussion, possible action to approve enterprise agreement renewal with ESRI for the maintenance of the GIS software modules for the annual amount of $41,041.
Move to approve.
And I will second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 3-0. Item 9, discussion, possible action to approve auction on June 11th, 2022 for obsolete county vehicles and furniture equipment?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? And I will second. Adicio?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the auction that is conducted by the county attorney's office, and it gives us the opportunity to auction off obsolete vehicles and furniture and equipment that no longer has any value for us.
Okay, terrific. Clean the cupboards. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10, discussion, possible action to approve contract with Palaverdi Behavioral Health for Title 36 Mental Health Evaluation Services from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2023, county attorney.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Do I have a second? And I will second. Under discussion, Kim?
This relates to our duties under Title 36 to send folks to the psychiatric hospitals for evaluation when they are danger to self, dangers to others persistently, or an acutely disabled or gravely disabled under the statute. And so we have an obligation to have a facility where we can do that, and it's our obligation to pay for the first three days of that. This contract has been approved by the county attorney's office for legal, under legal review, for that purpose.
Thank you very much. So is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, discussion, possible action to approve proclamation declaring June 14th, 2022 to be United States Army's 247th birthday. Chairman Moler?
Mr. Chair, if I may, can I read the proclamation?
Yes, sir.
Sacros County, United States Army, 247th birthday, June 14th, 2022. Whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress, representing the citizens of 13 American colonies, authorized the establishment of the Continental Army. And whereas, the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the new nation's basic principles and values in the Constitution. And whereas, for the past 247 years, the U.S. Army's central mission has been to fight and win the nation's wars. And whereas, the motto of duty, honor, country is a creed by which the American soldiers live and serve. And whereas, no matter what the cause, location, or magnitude of the future conflicts, the nation can rely on the U.S. Army to produce well-trained, well-led, and highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions entrusted to them. And whereas, the citizens of Santa Cruz County have proudly served and made the ultimate sacrifice of our nation's freedom while serving in the United States Army and other branches of our nation's military. Now, therefore, we, members of Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, and by our authority, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2022 to be the United States Army's 247th birthday. And further, we express appreciation on behalf of the people of Santa Cruz County, to the United States Army, and to the dedicated soldiers who have served in it for 247 years of its existence. Proclamation and adopted, 7th day of June 20th, 2022, Chairman Bruce Bracker, Vice Chairman Rudy Moler, and Member Manuel Ruiz.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Supervisor Malera, thank you very much for bringing this to the board.
You're welcome, sir.
I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item 12, discussion, possible action to adopt and approve resolution number 2022-08, Designating Vote Centers for the August 2nd, 2022 primary election.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
And do I have a second? And I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item 13, tax out evaluation adjustments, A through I.
Move to approve.
And I will, I have a second, and I will second. Pablo, can you?
Mr. Chair?
Under discussion?
I have a question on, under discussion, I have a question on item B and I.
Yes, any questions that you have, Mr. Chairman?
I kind of have a problem with this because it's property that's owned by the person still under investigation.
Hmm.
And, well, yeah.
Hasn't been named.
Yeah. Assumed, person A. And my question to you is, was any of this part of the property, part of the property mentioned in the issues with Mr. Fuentes?
I think it is, but this part of the property, the deed was recorded back in 2020 by ADOT as part of the eminent domain acquisition of the land, so we didn't do it at that time because the ADOT didn't provide us the recorder surveys until early this year, so that's why it's been done for 2021. So everything's been recorded, it's through ADOT. As you can see on the map, the green parts on that parcel 36A, 12A, and 35N are the parts that are requested for the tax adjustments that were condemned by the Department of Transportation. So, I mean, there's, even if it's under investigation, the person A or B or whatever, I mean, it's something that we have to go through and follow through with our work and do the correct split on it and take that part of the land away from the original parcel. And whatever investigation's under, it has nothing to do with our part of our job.
Supervisor Reese?
And all the documents have been recorded at the recorder's office. We have copies of all the right-of-way plans that were provided by us by ADOT, and we just went and drew it out and took that part of the land away from the parcel.
So regardless of the investigation, not taking this, the state went ahead, condemned about an acre, or took an eminent domain?
Yes.
Of the property there, so that means that the property is no longer the 10 acres or whatever it was designed to be at this point?
No, and at this point, it doesn't belong to that person anymore. It belongs to the Arizona Department of Transportation.
Yeah, but I guess the request is because we're taking, because the state took a part of that property, then the owner of the property has lost a portion of that property, so it shrunk in size.
Yes, exactly.
And so it changes the tax, how you value taxes, because now the shape of the land is shorter.
Yes.
And that's the only thing that you're asking here today, Zach, correct?
Yes, we're just making an adjustment on the square footage of the land.
Okay, and so on the Theta property, it's really the stuff that's facing Grand Avenue?
Yes.
It's very, it's kind of hard to see for me. It's a very small strip right in the front of the property?
I think it's...
Took me a minute to identify that.
Yeah, it's only like 8,500 square feet.
Maybe I should turn around.
Yeah, there it is, the green.
Yeah, so it's like 8,500 square feet that they took away, and a 3,600 square foot east meant, so it's about 11,000 square feet.
Okay, and obviously your reduction was proportional to the?
Yes.
The property that was taken?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I think Supervisor Malera had asked for B and I.
Those are?
Those are the two.
The ones he reported on.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
And Supervisor Malera, you have any other questions?
That's all I have.
Okay. So then we have a motion, a second, for the tax evaluation judgments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item 14, approval of minutes from 5:24:22.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? And then I will second. And any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Demands, Supervisor Malera?
Move to approve, demands totaling $4,685,060.44, of which $1,311,064. And, I'm sorry, $1,311,064.15 are from the general fund.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and we can pay our bills.
Absolutely. Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
And I deny. Move to adjourn. I have a motion, and I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and we are adjourned.